Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the council meeting for September 24th. I would ask that you stand and ask that Mr. Sullivan come down and offer the invocation, and we'll be led by the councilwoman Estee Bowen to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I ask you to bow in prayer, please. Almighty Heavenly Father, we're blessed to be in your presence today, Lord. We thank you for the rain that we received this morning and the beautiful sunshine this afternoon. Thank you for this fall season, Lord, the renewing of your earth. We ask that, we thank you for the cooler temperatures. Father, this council, we thank you for their willingness to serve and conduct the business of this city. Father, we ask your wisdom and discernment be upon them tonight, and peace in their decisions as well, Lord. And Father, we just, we know they have difficult things in front of them tonight, and they need your, they need your support, your loving arm wrapped around them. Father, we thank you for this great state and this great nation, the freedoms we enjoy, and we're so thankful, Lord, for those who are serving to guarantee our freedom in this great land. Guide and protect them, comfort them, and their families while they're away as well. Father, we thank you so much for Jesus, the example of service above self. Father, we thank you for that sacrifice and the blood that was shed on our behalf. It's in his holy name I ask these favors. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now we move into our community related announcements. This evening, do you have anything for the good of the body?
Well, October 5th is Midwest City Heart Fest, Root Fest in Town Center from 11:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. It is a family-friendly and pet-friendly event, and everyone is invited to come out and attend that. Hopefully the weather will cooperate for this event.
And it's a free event?
Yes. And there's going to be a petting zoo, and I am seeing some adoption opportunities out there for pets, and there's going to be art available out there. So it's kind of a combination of what we've had before for street festivals and art festivals, so should be a good time. And other related events, I received an identification of a community event, the Pumpkin Festival is going to be held October 12th, also known as OU Texas Game Day at the St. Matthews United Methodist Church. That's always a good community event, from 9:00 a.m. to, I believe it's 2:00 p.m. on that one. And of course, Neighborhood National Night Out, October 1st. Ward 1 is having our combined event at the Charles Johnson Pavilion, excuse me, at the Regional Park Pavilion, and the address, please see, can somebody join in a grill for that event? If anybody knows, anybody wants to volunteer for that, it would be greatly appreciated. That one starts at 5:30, and I know all the neighborhoods have theirs set up as well. So, thank you.
Yes, to follow up, Mayor, on the National Night Out, we have 24 of our 34 active neighborhood associations will be participating. Other community events, Money Magazine, we're proud to announce listed Midwest City is one of the hundred, one of America's 100 best places to live. So there was only a couple of community. Pleased to announce that, certainly agree with that. Number two, Midwest City received a report card from the Oklahoma State 911 Authority this past week, and was pleased to receive a score of 95% out of 100% grading based on our criteria of disaster plan and our public safety insurance point. Good job to our 911 Center, Emergency Operations Center. That's the last time I checked that today. Third, we received a notice in the fire department of the Safer Grant, which is happening for adequate fire and emergency response. This is a FEMA grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. It allows us to hire three additional personnel that was recommended by the ECI study. The grant will offset salaries for those individuals for three years. It does not pay for 100%, but it's a shared cost, and the value is over $332,000 over three years. So good job, Bert and David Richardson and the other fire personnel that worked on that. Very helpful for our budget for the next five years. The police department will be hosting a three-on-three basketball tournament sponsored by Arnold Foundation on September 29th, which is usually very well attended. October 15th, Stormwater with the Oklahoma Water Survey will conduct a rain barrel workshop. Register online at MidwestCityOK.org. The cost is $55 for the 33-gallon barrel and parts to convert. It is, I think, $20. October 25th and 27th is the Neighborhood Initiative Annual Food Drive at Sam's from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. All those citizens that shopping Sam's on the 25th and 27th, please donate an item, and we will distribute those items over Christmas. I believe, is that, if there are any times where my...
Actually, it's been moved to the next weekend. Sam's didn't have an opening.
Okay. So what are the dates for...
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, first, Friday, Saturday, Sunday in November.
Okay. First Friday, Saturday, and Sunday of November. Good drive. October 26th, in Trick or Treat City, please bring your children out for that event. It's a neat event at Regional Park. It's going to be regional response. Vaughn's chatting out there. Regional Park, yes. October 31st is also a special need, Trick or Treat City, and that's, that'll be in the community center at 10:30, October 31st. And finally, November 11th is Veterans, our Veterans Day. We're...
Thank you. One added announcement, the 14th of September, we had our first rollout of the Community Partnerships cleanup. We brought these folks together, faith-based, and civic organizations to come together and help our citizens who need help with minor home repair and cleanup. Well, after a windstorm, we felt like that was a perfect venue to test that system. I'll tell you, on the 14th of, the morning of 14th, I was a little nervous because we had 21 homes to service, and nobody showed up. I was going to be very busy for this several days picking up stuff, but as a result, we had 54 volunteers show up, 21 Air Force personnel. Mr. Bridges was out there, several individuals, and several groups were represented and included the Middel Group Homes, and we serviced 21 homes, got storm debris picked up out of the yards, and got it to curb. Well, this Saturday, the 28th, is going to be the follow-up on that, and we are going to go around and pick up what we picked up and take it to the compost facility on 36th. We've got 26 homes to service, and we're asking the folks that you got a truck, let her pick up, come meet us at the community center at 8 o'clock Saturday morning. We'll try to get you out of there before kickoff. I'm not going to guarantee it. Now, it's kickoff in 11:00, I believe, this Saturday. Through the cokes. Through the cokes. For the sewers, it's 11:00, 11:00 o'clock kickoff, trying to confuse me, Pat. What did I read? But anyway, it was a great, great community get-together, and neighbor helping neighbor, that's what it's all about. And it was a great turnout, and I'm very pleased, and we look forward to working with these groups and helping more people. So it's, it was a great event, and I'm very blessed, we're very blessed to have those types of folks that come out and help us.
I think we should give them a hand for all this, the good work they've done.
It's very gratifying. It truly is, and all the people that stepped up was just awesome. And like I said, I was a little nervous because I'd still be out there picking up limbs if somebody showed up, but...
A lot of people, 54 people, I mean, volunteers come out, that's a lot.
Mayor, before we move forward, I have one more announcement.
Yes, ma'am.
October 26th is also Susan G. Coleman Race for the Cure Breast Cancer Walk, so if you want to come out and do that also. It's an every-year event, and it's very good for the state of Oklahoma, in our city too, so.
Thank you, Estee. Next, we've got a proclamation. We've got a special person that we want to honor, and so I'll come down front.
I have a question before we move on. Chief, on the three-and-three basketball tournament, do you still need volunteers for that event? Who's the, who's the point of contact for that?
Tom Lance. We'll be there early, it starts at 9:00, we'll be there about 7:00, so it's just simple.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you. And who's doing Trick or Treat City? Who's the coordinator for that one?
Marshall Wright, office.
Who's, who's...
Marshall Wright, or Claudia B., is the coordinator.
Claudia Kuss.
Y'all listen to Charlotte? She's a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, eighty bucks. You know, one of the, one of the neat things that we get to do as council and as the mayor is, we get to honor folks, and this was a special one. I've known Charlotte, we met when I was a police officer, and I won't tell them how. Is that okay? I won't tell them how we met, but we've known each other for a while. But anyway, Charlotte has been a longtime resident of Midwest City, and today is National Centurion Day, and so Midwest City has got their own centurion right in front of us. So let me read this. Whereas National Centurion Day is observed annually on the 22nd of Oc, or 22nd of September to honor those who are 100 years old or older, with the day originally proclaimed as a time to listen to a centurion, as they have so much rich history and wisdom to share. Whereas Midwest City wishes to honor our own centurion, Miss Charlotte Heil, born on January 15th, 1919, in Brook, Indiana.
Blizzard, the worst blizzard they ever had.
That brought, that brought you into the world, the blizzard. Who moved to Midwest City a few years later after Pearl Harbor. Whereas Miss Heil was married for almost 50 years before her husband passed, and she has, she is a mother of two children. Her son will be 84 in September, and her daughter turns 70 in June. So therefore, I'm Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, and hereby proclaim 22nd of October 2019 as Charlotte Heil Day in Midwest City, and ask all the citizens of Midwest City to urge, or urge all the citizens of Midwest City to show your appreciation to Miss Heil and her longevity in our community. And I do want to introduce one of her daughters, Jenny, son-in-law, Jerry, and great grandson, Kirk. So anyway, congratulations, Charlotte. Here, we, we gotta take a picture. This is all part of it. Well, that's all right. You've earned the right not to smile.
Well, I've got a lot to smile about.
Now, I'm going to ask.
The Lord's been good. Yes, thank you.
No, we're going this way.
Y'all have a good summer.
You too.
Good summer. Oh, well.
That's all the, all, that's the fun stuff that we get to do, and she's a delightful person to sit down and talk to. So that being said, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agenda so that council by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council or members of the audience, we should discuss an item that moved and heard in regular order. Chair, entertain a motion to approve, plus the number 11, the addendum, item two, consent agenda.
I'm asking to...
Item seven?
I'm asking that item one be removed.
Item one?
Yes, please.
So I'd entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of item one and item seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion seconded and furthered discussion. All in favor, you can say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. We'll move to item number one. Yes, ma'am?
I have an issue with something that was contained in the packet that was posted for the last meeting, and since that's reflected into the meeting minutes from the last meeting, I've sent an email addressing that issue to Mr. Lyons, and I'm asking that that agenda item be addressed.
So that would be item five, so we can approve all the minutes except for item five, which we'll go back and take another look at and bring back for council meeting, at the next council meeting, within the minutes.
Has to do... Has to do with the health benefits?
No.
Not item five from the last meeting, mayor?
Item five, uh, from the last.
Yeah, from the last meeting.
Okay, I get it. Is that, uh...
We're approving them, all the minutes except for that function of, or that piece of the minutes, which is item five, which we'll come back and bring back.
Tonight or another night?
It'll have to be another night.
Can I ask why?
Because it is on the agenda and it can be pulled to discussion. So why does it have to come back another night?
What's the correction that needs to be made now?
Yeah. Councilwoman Eads has asked that we review that item, some of the language in that item to make sure it accurately reflects...
Okay.
Um, the planning commission. Well, it's really a staff report. It's really not, well, it's the planning commission staff report.
Okay. Will it have to be brought back as a discussion item or consent agenda item next go around?
Yeah, we can.
Which one?
What's your wishes, Mr. Eads? I mean, do you want to bring it back as a consent item? Once the corrections are made or you want it as a discussion item?
I'm fine with a consent item once the issue's addressed.
Okay.
Thank you. So the motion needs to read, that we're going to take no action on number one, bring it back for council on the consent agenda, next council meeting with corrections need to be, that need to be made, correct?
No, we need to approve all of the minutes except for number five.
Right.
I stand corrected.
I make a motion to approve all the minutes except for number five, as discussed, and it will be corrected and brought back into consent agenda on the following council meeting.
You have that motion?
We'll, we'll help you with, we'll, Heather and I.
Wait a minute, number five?
Do I correct one more? I mean, if the minute three is correctly added, that's the problem.
There is a correction, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I have a motion.
Uh, I need some clarification. Is the minutes from September the tenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
No.
Well...
I don't care. Give it, Esme make a motion. It doesn't matter. As long as the motion...
I second.
We let her make the motion, that way we get what, we get it right. So she knows what she wants.
Well, the chair entertained a motion from somebody.
Reed made the motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Well, September the tenth.
Any motions good?
September the tenth.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Item number seven, Mr. Bridges, you want to come to the podium and address council? Please state your name and address.
William Bridges, ten three hundred Belmont Avenue. My question on seven, and I have read and reread this memorandum of understanding. What is going on at Rose State? And I'm glad Brandon is here. You know and I know, I've been a dispatcher here for the P, uh, PD. I in turn have been a security officer, CLEAT certified, about fifteen years before I gave it up. Why in turn do we need a memorandum of understanding? Why do we take our outstanding police chief and give him more or less, to me, additional duties, additional responsibilities? He has enough to take care of our officers. And in turn, is it because Rose State does not want to, you know and I know, it takes about nineteen weeks for CLEAT certification? Is it that they do not want to spend the money and they want to hire our office, which in turn, I have worked at Heritage Park Mall many, many days with a Midwest City officer standing right next to me and we walked the grounds? There's certain things that you do, certain things you cannot do. We did not tell anybody, you're under arrest. We told them, we are detaining you. You know and I know, as a citizen, you have that right. So my question is, why are we entering, or why are we even talking about a memorandum of understanding? What is going on? Because I can't find any figures. Now, I can go back up to two thousand sixteen and I think I found about seven or eight as far as recorded problems out at Rose State. So why in turn is there a call for a memorandum of understanding? What are those individuals out there that's CLEAT certified that is doing or not doing that we in turn have to quote what I could more or less call meddle into a private business affairs? If they're not doing it right, then in turn we need to correct them. Other than that, we do, we do, we do, we, do we enter one with our banks? Do we enter one with our credit union? You have officers that's there, working off duty. Do we do that? Do we have something like that for them? I ask that this item be deleted until further discussions or come up with why in turn do we have to have this?
Brandon, would you like to come up?
I think it's an educational point for Mr. Bridges. Uh, let me give you a little history about Rose State College. At one time, Rose State actually had their own police department established by statute. Because their state money is used as far as the expenditure to pay for security, this is no different than the agreements that we have with all the different facilities and businesses throughout Midwest City, Tinker Federal Credit Union, First National Bank, the other locations our officers work. But because state money is expended, the board of regents and state board of regents require a memorandum of understanding. What this agreement allows is our officers who are off-duty to work part-time as police officers, security for Rose State College. We have two forms, an addendum that's supplied, that they cover all workers' comp claims if those officers are injured while they're working for Rose State College. The difference, Mr. Bridges, is with Rose State is state money that's being expended, so they require the memorandum of understanding. But to help you feel better, these officers are actually off-duty. They're not on-duty police officers and they choose to work those jobs. And for example, First National Bank, we have a form that's, that alleviates up from any workers' comp claims if the officer's injured. Now, you know, there's a threshold, once the security officer becomes a police officer, that's a different issue. But these agreements have been in place for many, many years. They've worked really well. They provide additional police officers throughout the city of Midwest City. I know Mr. Byrne runs security for Oklahoma City in different venues for many, many years. He understands these type of agreements. And so I think it's just an educational, but because we have the MOU is because state money is expended for this, this security. Council, mayor, have any questions? Mr. Bridges?
Brandon, thank you very much. See, I could not determine in this memo it involves state money. So in turn, it's state money, the state wants accountability. I did not want you to put, uh, have additional responsibility, Brandon. I think as serving as our outstanding police chief, you don't need any additional. And this is what I was trying to avoid. I didn't want it to be something that was pushed more or less on you.
No, sir. No, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your concern, but it's a longstanding agreement. We're very comfortable with it and appreciate you bringing it forward. But you're always welcome to call me too at the office and I'll be glad to answer those questions for you. Any questions?
And with the, and I will say, with the MOU that's in place, it's a whole lot cleaner for the city and for Rose State and more importantly, for the officers that are working there.
Right. And there's the Cleary Act, which is a federal act that protects the students and protects Rose State College if there's any incident occurs on campus. So there's a lot of things involved. Our, our city attorney has worked very hard on this agreement with, with Rose State College. We tweaked it this year a little bit differently, but very comfortable with it. But the officers that work there are off-duty and they're, they're employed by Rose State College at that time.
Thank you, Chief. With that being said, any further questions, Chief? Chair, entertain a motion to approve item number seven?
We'll approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second and further discussion. All in favor, indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll move into our discussion items. Um, you know, I'll make a point of clarification. Uh, I would like for the council to consider to pull items one and two and without taking action. Uh, the reason being, there is a issue with some improvements that are being required and we haven't got sufficient language in place to provide that these improvements be equitably enforced across the board. And until such language is in place, uh, I think we will be remiss in even considering these items. So with that being said, I would request that these items be removed from the discussion items and take no action on them tonight. Be brought before, back before the city council in ninety days for reconsideration, allowing the community services to come back with sufficient language as been discussed. Uh, with that, I would entertain a session.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, um, the item, uh, PC twenty sixteen, the first item there, item number one, it was actually tabled and this was in the, in the process of, of, of going through due process, but was tabled. Uh, this was heard before the council item was, I just want to make sure that you underst- that, that was clear. Okay?
Yes, sir, I, I understand that.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any discussion?
Question I've got then, particularly on twenty sixteen, which is item number one, there's, there's some date, there's some timeframe in there that you have to meet, correct? If we postpone this for ninety days, are we pushing it beyond that timetable that we're allowed by ordinance?
Do you know what the timetable goes on that off the top of your head?
It, it's thirty days after the planning commission meeting and this item was supposed to be heard at the September tenth meeting. The applicant wasn't able to be here because of a surgery, so, and the pre-application meeting for this, this one was before all the discussion began about fees in lieu of streets and sidewalks.
Yes, and, and then they can be postponed or tabled, but they would have to be at the request of the applicant themselves before it triggers the automatic approval.
Uh, I do stand corrected, uh, on the ninety day, uh, bring it back in forty-five days rather than ninety days. That'd be within forty-five days.
Are we here again? Are we under the...
Are we under the...
On the first item, um, I'd have to look at the, the dates to see if that's, do you know what the top of your head?
The planning commission meeting was September sixth. However, the applicant had surgery and so she wasn't able to be here on September tenth. There, there were several other applications that were just like this one on the September tenth agenda.
So you could ask if they, if they would go ahead and, and you could ask that they postpone this or if they're okay with tabling it.
And, and that one went to planning commission on August third, I believe. Yeah, August sixth.
Yeah, I'm very sick right there.
I feel like you guys are penalizing me because I had cancer, because I couldn't be here the tenth and had I been here the...
Ma'am, uh, could you come up to the podium? I'm sorry. Um, it's hard to, hard to hear if you're here.
I have lung cancer, so it's a little bit, I mean, lung surgery is a little bit...
You have my address, I'm sorry.
Kathy Barley, twenty-five forty-one Hand Road, Midwest City. I couldn't be here the tenth because of surgery, but I feel like if you put me off even further, I, I don't know what it is that you want us to do because there's no city sewer out there and there's no sidewalk anywhere at, at all out there. And so I feel like if you want me to put in a city sewer or sidewalk, that's not something that anybody out there has.
Well, ma'am, the issue we had, I, I really can't get into the discussion with you right now, but the issue we had that's not even involved that. It's, it's more a procedural issue and we need to be fair in how we treat this. So it's not...
Okay. But it seems like I'm being penalized because I wasn't here the tenth.
Trust me, you're not. That hasn't, that, I didn't even know that and that doesn't have anything to do with it. It, it really doesn't.
What is it that you...
So, uh, I need some guidance from city attorney. How do we proceed, ma'am?
If, if anyone on the council is interested in having item one heard today, there could be a motion made to go ahead and do a vote on that and see if the council is in favor of having a vote on that this evening.
What's the, uh, what's the wishes of the council?
I move to proceed and let's hear the applicant out.
There, there would need to be a vote on, have you already indicated that there's no action on that item this evening?
No, ma'am, that's what I was requesting.
Okay. So there would need to be a vote or a motion to go ahead and have that item be heard this evening? And then after, if that passes, then the applicant would come to the podium and answer questions.
But he didn't say that he was pulling it.
Uh, well, I actually technically did. I asked that both one and two be pulled in, in regards to the issue that we had come up. So with that being said, chair, would you entertain a motion to hear?
I renew my motion to hear the applicant on this issue.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Abstained.
What's the county clerk? Uh, we'll go ahead and hear item number one.
Item number one, discussion item one, PC two thousand sixteen, discussion consideration of approval of the proposed preliminary plat of Mary Nolan Estate, described as part of the Southwest Quarter, Section Eight, Township eleven, North Range One West, addressed as twenty-five hundred Hand Road. This item was tabled at the September tenth, two thousand nineteen meeting at the request of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Um, this item is a, is a request to subdivide a single parcel into two approximately one-point five acre individual parcels for single-family development. The proposed lots have frontage on Hand Road. Each of the proposed lots is over one acre in size. The applicant is requesting a waiver to the requirement of half-street and sidewalk improvements as well as sanitary sewer extension. The city is in the process of installing a water main along the area of request. Uh, regarding the waivers to half-street and sidewalk improvements, the pre-application meeting for this request was held April fifth, two thousand nineteen, prior to the June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen council meeting, in which the council asked staff to research alternatives such as development fees or a fee in lieu of these requirements. Staff report recommends approval of the Mary Nolan Estates preliminary plat. Planning commission and staff recommend approval.
Approval for adding the...
The, the, the planning commission recommended approval of, of the waivers as well.
So there's no recommendation from planning commission or your office to make a payment in lieu of, uh...
No, sir.
Street or sidewalk improvements?
No, sir. This was, um, is, is what we don't like to do is change the, uh, the rules as an applicant is going through and since the preliminary talks with staff and their, their pre-development meetings with staff was before that council meeting, um, that, as we've noted in all the previous ones, um, and the following ones, that those dates are key as far as staff is concerned. So, uh, no, we did not. We do recommend the, the waiver until, until, uh, since those were already in the queue for public hearing.
So if I'm hearing you right, this first came to your all's attention on April fifth. The process was started in, I think the key date on this is June twenty-fifth. The process was started in, I think the key date on this is June twenty-fifth.
Yes, sir.
And that's when it was brought up that the council was wanting to move, possibly move in the direction of not granting any more waivers on the streets and on the sidewalks. And that was June twenty-fifth, correct?
Yes, sir.
Hers was April fifth, which means the process had already started.
Correct.
I'd love to make a point. You say?
Council gave him a direction, but it wasn't a discussion item. It was the request of one councilman to look at it. I don't think we ever had the discussion item as a council and so.
It was my request to look at it and several other council members did say they think that was a good idea.
Was there a vote on that?
No. To your point, I think it needs to be a discussion item.
A separate discussion item at some point. So the magic date really hasn't came around.
Except these are variances that this, that the council can choose at any time to accept or not to accept. Regardless of if we decide to address this at a later date or not to address it at a later date, we still can choose to give a variance or not regardless of what the June twenty-fifth item was talked about was.
Understand, I just wanted to clarify Mr. Burns' point that the significance of this one is the date and of, you know.
Let me rephrase it. The significance for me, not everybody else, for me, is June twenty-fifth and April fifth and those are accurate dates. That's just me asking you. I'm not speaking for anybody else on this horseshoe.
Yes, sir, and, and it was an important date in, in staff's mind because that's why we've noted it in all the applications at that point moving forward.
Last council meeting, we had one of these that came up and I don't usually vote for variances, but I voted for the variance for the simple fact that we are in discussions to change the way we're doing things. And since I voted for a variance last go-around, I don't think I could very easily say no to a variance on this one where you were caught up where, whether it was understood or inferred, that the will of the council is one thing. I agree with Jeff, we probably need to have a discussion item on this, but I don't believe that you should be stuck in limbo while we're trying to determine if we're going to change a different direction.
Thank you.
And just so I'm clear too, Mr. Harless, there are rules in place today in the subdivision regulations that give the council the authority to not grant variances on sidewalks and street improvements and it gives you the ability to assess fees in lieu of, correct?
I believe that's on the sidewalks and the variance comes from a recommendation of the, the planning commission.
So we're not making these rules up as we're going along? There's, there's some rules in place already?
No, sir.
So with my, what I had said, if, I'm going to make a motion to pass this.
Ma'am, do you have anything to say to the council?
I have a question, really quickly. Billy, I'm not understanding, I'm sorry. So what you're saying is this is based on a recommendation of the planning commission for a variance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but what's the provision that Pat is referencing that allows that specifically to occur?
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, but technically, I mean, in the orders, the, it talks about the planning director having some authority to allow the, at one-hundred-and-fifteen or one-hundred-and-ten percent of the, the, the price to be paid in lieu of the sidewalks. I don't think it refers to half-street improvements. As long as I've been here, that's, that's never, that's never been enforced because there, there's not been the planning commissioner of the council that's been willing to enforce that.
So historically, it's not been enforced, correct?
Correct.
Ma'am, again, do you have anything for the council?
We, no, but we would like to have city sewer out there. Y'all bring it on out there, we're happy to pay for it, just like we did the water.
Well, that's going to be another long discussion, ma'am.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, if y'all offer it, we'll take it and we'll pay for it. But I can't get it because it's not available.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. You know, we, we are running water out there and that was a big hurdle for us, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar project.
You just got past my house today.
And, and I do see in the notes that you have paid your, your deposit and you're going to hook up.
It's probably the first one.
I, I seem to think, I, I seem to remember when you came to council before and said you'd be, you'd jump on board as soon as we did that and thank you for that. Is there any further discussion on this particular item? Hearing none, now the chair to entertain a motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
That's to approve it, correct?
Approve is with the variances that are in there.
That's the way I understood it.
So the motion is to approve with the variance. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I'd like to point out that I'm going to step down. This next discussion item I have a conflict with, it's, it's one of mine, so I'm going to step down.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, I appreciate it.
Mr. Moore, we'll have somebody come get you if you go out the side door, thank you.
Once again, I would request council's indulgence in not taking any action on, on item number two in consideration of some of the changes that we are considering to get more sufficient language in front of us before we make a decision. So with that, we can either take no action or the chair would entertain a motion to hear it and, and, and go through that process again.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Yes, ma'am.
So what's the difference between this one and the last one that we just went ahead and heard? Is this the same where the application came?
It's, it's not the, it's not the same as the one before. This one actually came a few days after the council's discussion on the twenty-fifth, so this came in.
Application was July third.
July third and the, the pre-application, July third and the, the meeting was.
Okay, but here's the part that I'm not understanding. The council's discussion versus we have anything that is binding and applicable on us, how do we then treat this application different than the one that we just treated? That's what I'm not understanding. So I guess I would move to hold discussion on this item. I mean, we just went through one, the applicant was here for it and we just addressed it with the understanding that we're moving towards looking at revising our policy language concerning these issues. So why do we need to pass on this one and we just did the last one?
Well, I could make a motion for approval with no variance allowed. I'll make that motion.
But we just gave a variance on the last one.
It came afterwards. We do have an agreement with the applicant to, to, to not, not discuss this tonight and bring it back at the next, two, within the next forty-five days and give us an opportunity to sit down with, with council and discuss the staff recommendation.
So that's the applicant's request?
He, he agreed to that.
He, he agreed to that, yes, ma'am. And again, it's too cloudy and we've got several issues in front of us and of course, as you're familiar with Fourteenth Amendment, we need to be, make sure that we don't penalize him and, and make sure that we are equitable as we go forward. So it was discussed today and, and felt like this was the best course of action for not only applicant but before the council. There was a request made by council to move forward with some language that would require a payment in lieu of to start mitigating some of the issues we've discussed in the past. Community development moved ahead with that request and are working on language. The biggest hurdle that we have right now is how do we equitably figure the cost and pass it on to the applicants? Right now, we've got a thirty-thousand-dollar delta between the city's estimate and the applicant's estimate on what it would cost to put curb and gutter and sidewalks in. Also, another issue that's clouding it is the same one that the last applicant brought forward is that do we really want to start putting sidewalks to nowhere? And the street improvements, I can understand, but do we really want to push forward on the sidewalks? So as you can see, there's a lot of different varying issues that we really need to drill down and get answers to before we move ahead. To be fair to the applicant and for everybody else, because this will be affecting every other application that comes before, planning commission and the council.
I would remind council at this point, the mayor has indicated that there's no action on item number two. If there needs to be discussion, someone needs to make a motion to go ahead and have discussion.
Do we know that?
I think I made that motion already. And so with the mayor's clarification, I'll withdraw my motion and.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. So we'll proceed with no action taken on item number two.
And just, just a quick note, because I feel this is important, due, due to the auto, some of the automatic triggers within the subdivision regulations, this would have to be acted on by October twenty-second or is automatically approved.
We will, we will ensure that it's acted on some manner before then.
Okay, and that the? The applicant, we would bring it forth the next, or the, within the, by the twenty-second.
Okay.
So we are in agreement in our action, in course of action. Thank you very much, council, for your indulgence. Mr. Stroh, could you ask Mr. Moore to step back to the horseshoe?
As long as we can. Does it go with the variance?
It'll be up to the council.
It would act without the variance because the variances are something that would have to be required by the, or be requested by the planning commission and they were not, they were pushed, put off to the council. Now, the applicant can request to postpone the hearing for even longer. We need something in writing.
Okay.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move on to the next discussion item.
Discussion item number three, PC two thousand eighteen, discussion and consideration of approval of the Aspen Ridge, Section three, formerly known as Turtlewood Final Plat for the property described as a part of the southeast quarter of Section seven, Township eleven, North Range one west. Mr. Harless?
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager. This plat is a continuation of the entire Turtlewood addition. The developer has opted to name all sections west of Snapper Lane, Aspen, Aspen Ridge. The final plat is consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved in January twenty-third, two thousand eighteen. The applicant, application is being heard under the nineteen-eighty-five subdivision regulations as the original preliminary plat was heard under those regulations. Public improvements are required and plans must be submitted to and approved by the city engineer. Planning commission and staff recommend approval. God, do you answer any questions?
The applicant is in the audience, sir. You want to step before, podium, list, mention your name and address, please.
Mohammed Khan with SMC Consulting Engineers, eight fifty investment, seven three one oh six. Appreciate and thank you for hearing our case. I appreciate the help we really have received from the staff. This is like Mr. Harless has said, this is continuation of the previously approved preliminary plat in different phases. Construction plans for public improvement have been submitted to staff and staff is in agreement with the design or the plans. In addition to what Mr. Harless said, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Billy, I've got a question to you. And this may be a dumb question, but you said that we're going off of nineteen-eighty-five subdivision regulations, right?
Yes, sir.
And there's, there's, we're on two thousand and twelve, we're holding everybody else, so there's a difference of twenty-seven years in there. What, a lot of things have changed, I mean.
Yes, sir.
A lot of the requirements have changed are, and I'm assuming that, do, is that something that we need to look at because is, are there things being built today on the regulations that we're not saying necessarily is, but in nineteen-eighty-five and we're in two thousand and nineteen? And I don't know how many revisions, but we, we've at least got one revision in two thousand and twelve.
Yes, sir. On subdivisions, when they come in and do a, a sketch plat and a preliminary plat for such a large area, the courts have, have, and I'm not saying that we couldn't challenge it, and something this big and it's taken this long, you might be able to make a case for it, but we do not, we do not change the requirements halfway through a development. So they've, they've invested in infrastructure and they've invested in the overall design of the subdivision up to this point. And so that's why we, when there is a difference in, in the old regulations versus the new, plus the installment of those improvements happens at a different time. They happen at the preliminary plat and the new subdivision regulations and here they happen at the final plat afterwards. I know it's a little confusing, but we don't, we don't change the regulations after, after somebody has started on a, on a subdivision. That's where we've been in trouble before with the, with the courts. Patrick, I don't know if you have something?
Yeah, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Councilman, with the nineteen-eighty-five regulation, that's really more on the procedural side. I, I want to ensure the council that everything's installed and is up to code to this current date and that goes through DEQ, through our latest subreg, subregs, or I'm sorry, our installation regulations. So everything is current. This is more of a case that the procedural steps that are taken are from the older code. It does not mean that they are allowed to build a substandard subdivision.
That's a very good point, thank you.
That's what I was hoping that the answer was, but I didn't know, so that's why I asked.
Now, this is also the subdivision and we had some drainage issues on the backside of this and the applicant went back and corrected some of the ones and elongated the drainage detention. And my question to you, or I haven't heard any, but have we had any more issues since the improvements were made?
You know, we've had some pretty significant events since that time.
Yes, we have.
And I know that the, the, I should say that, that from where I've checked on it, that the, the systems are working fine as far as bypassing Mr. Peeler's property. Patrick, you have anything to add on to that? They extended the, the, the system the way they were supposed to, so.
Yes, like Mr. Harless says, everything that they had promised to the council has been constructed and it's functioning. I've not heard from any of the property owners to the west that were impacted before. I believe everything is in good order.
Nor have I heard any, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that and I appreciate you mentioning about public improvements that we have gone beyond what is minimum required. We have exceeded the drainage improvement, especially that part.
You understand why I answered?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm in agreement with you that it needed some clarification and I appreciate Mr. Harless and Patrick clarifying it for you.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here this evening. With all that being said, is there any further discussion on this item? Chair to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thank you for being here this evening, sir.
Thank you very much.
We'll move into discussion item number four.
Number four, PC two thousand nineteen, public hearing with discussion and consideration of an ordinance to redistrict from R six, single-family detached residential to C three, community commercial and a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan from LDR, low-density residential, to COMM, commercial for the property described as a part of the northeast quarter, Section twenty-five, Township twelve, North Range two west and further described as the north hundred and fifteen feet of the parcel addressed at twenty, ninety-six, twenty-two, northeast twenty-third. Billy?
Thank you, Mr. Line, you're getting, pretty good at reading those legal descriptions and stuff. This is a request to rezone the property from R six family, a single-family detached residential to C three, community commercial. If you remember, this was at one time a request for C four. The applicant has since revised that. This parcel, parcel was annexed into Midwest City many years ago under R one D zoning district, just as many other parcels in the northeast part of the city. Over the years, the building closest to northeast twenty-third street has been used for various non-conforming commercial purp- has been used for various non-conforming commercial purposes, even though the zoning was not appropriate. The residential structure behind the commercial building has been used as a residence. The applicant has asked staff, that's what triggered the, the zoning request. The applicant has asked staff about using the commercial building for medical marijuana dispensary. This would require the zoning be amended to allow the new use. The applicant is requesting to rezone the north 115 feet of the property to C3 in order to come into conformance with the future commercial use. The remainder of the lot is remain zones, R6, single family detached residential, so that it, existing structure may continue to be used as such. No variance are requested, and no public improvements are required with this application. Planning commission and staff recommend approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, he is. So, we're gonna split this into two different zonings, correct?
Yes, sir. It's, it's not uncommon, especially in some of the older buildings, uh, older areas.
Well, it may not be uncommon, but is it wise for us to do that?
It's not optimal, but we've, we've done this, done this in some other places where you have existing buildings and, and you have different zone, uh, different uses going on within. This is approximately five acres, I think it's like 4.78 acres. And he's wanting to use the front 1900, approximately 1900 square feet for the commercial use. He's been using it for commercial, but with the laws and oversight of the medical marijuana laws, that's what's triggered him to go back through for the zoning request.
Wasn't he in front of us a couple of months ago for the front building to be zoned for a dispensary?
Yes, it wasn't for just a dispensary, but also processing and maybe grow. But it was above and beyond the dispensary.
Okay. Now, is this like a front type of business?
Is this, um, I-
Yes, on page two of the, the staff report, you can see there's a couple of pictures.
Okay. I, well, I'm in. I was looking at, okay.
Page 326.
Well, it's, it's a business. It's not like a business, all right?
Can I ask a clarification question?
Yeah.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, so the current application is to move the front section of the property that faces 23rd to C3, which does not allow for medical marijuana grow or processing, but would allow for the dispensary, correct?
Yes, yes.
Kelly's nodding at me as I'm going through this. Thank you, Kelly. And the back portion of the property would still stay residential, correct? So, that doesn't make that non-conforming? And if he wanted to do something with the back section of the property, that would have to come before us again, other than to leave it as residential, correct?
Yes, and where it may become complicated for the applicant is if they wanted to sell off parts of this, they'd have to start dividing it up somehow. They would have, they would have some other issues that they'd have to address.
But if the applicant is still owning the whole, it's just rezoning the front, the southern section of the lot, correct?
150 foot deep, yes.
Okay.
And if you were to rezone the entire property commercial, that would then make the house non-conforming, because you can't live in a commercial district. So, this was the, the not optimal option, but the best for the buildings that are there and that have been there for many years.
And will continue to be there if we pass this.
And we have done others of these on arterial streets, correct? For dispensaries, to change the zoning on those to a C3?
Sir, you have anything to bring before the council? Please state your name and address for the council.
Yes, your honor, my name is Garth Leodia. I was here in July and it didn't go very well. I was quickly shut down. I come with a plea on a menelab knee, because I think we have suffered enough. None of us here would like to have a building that has been empty for five years. We pay water, we pay light, we pay for gas, and people are beginning to break in. Two and a half months ago, we had to call the City of Midwest City Police Department. People are breaking into the car, because there's nobody in that building. Now, the building was, it was a grocery store. It was a clinic. It was a restaurant. It was a coffee shop. Lo and behold, they say now, we can't use it for marijuana dispensary. There's marijuana dispensary two blocks west. There's marijuana dispensary two block south. I don't smoke marijuana, never have, never will, but it's business. Every week, somebody always called Ms. Kelly to see if they can use that property, whether it had been approved. So, I come to plead with this committee, so that we can get approval, because we are really borrowing money to pay mortgage, so we don't lose that property. And somebody was telling me, why can't you use it for something else? It's supply and demand. Somebody want to use it for dispensary? I said, no, you have to use it for restaurant. They said, no, I don't want restaurant. And somebody was asking me if I know the rules and responsibilities. No, I don't smoke, but they want to rent the property. That's why I'm pleading. I'm just pleading, I've lived in this city for 28 years, Midwest City. I don't know, I'm a citizen of Midwest City. I don't know how much weight it carries. I don't know what I'm doing wrong. I really don't know. And, and-
So, it fronts 23rd Street, which should be commercial anyway.
Yes, sir. It's been, it's been commercial all the time we have had it.
Yes, but it's, but it's not zoned that way.
Sir?
It's not zoned that way at this point. It's zon, it's zoned as a R6, single family detached residential. And regardless of what it's been used for, for you to do this, we have to rezone it and split this. And while it's not optimal, I think it needs to be done, because it fronts a, a street. Regardless of whether it's used for a legal operation like a marijuana grow or a restaurant or whatever else, at some point, we're gonna have to take this action anyway, because it's gonna be a, it needs to be commercial anyhow.
Because you're not trying, you're just gonna be dispensary, you're not trying to grow.
No, ma'am, no.
Okay, all right, okay.
No, ma'am.
Okay, is there any further questions of the applicant or developmental services? Hearing none, and chair to entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve, because it's in a commercial, I, I went by there and I saw it sit, it faces the, um, the north, the, the, uh, the place-
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. You got your zoning, sir.
Oh, thank you.
And maybe you can make it a restaurant and a dispensary in corner of the market on it.
Yeah.
Animals are legal, mayor.
Maybe a cookie shop.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, move into item number five.
Item number five, PC 2020, public hearing with discussion and consideration of an ordinance to redistrict from R6, single family detached residential to C4, general commercial, and a resolution for a special use permit to allow the use of it. Animal sales and services, kennels and veterinary services, general for the properties described as part of southwest quarter, Section 35, Township 12 North, Range 2 West, addressed as 8485 East Reno, 2901 Woodside Drive and 2905 Woodside Drive. Mr. Harless?
Yes, thanks again, Mr. Lyon. This is a request to rezone the property from R6, single family detached residential to C4, general commercial, the special use permit to allow the use of animal cell, animal sales and service, kennels and veterinary services, general. In 2018, Midwest City voters approved several propositions pertaining to quality of life projects. And I believe everyone's familiar with this one, and so, and the sake of time, I'll leave it at that. Planning commission and, and, and staff recommend approval.
I would hope there's no discussion on that, but is there any discussion on this?
Move to approve, second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries.
Not a discussion, but a thank you. We have got three ladies out there, two of which have served on the committee and one has been one of the biggest cheerleaders we've had. And I appreciate you guys spending your time, your resources, your hours, things that you can't get back to make sure that this animal shelter is the best that we can do. Thank you, three.
Okay, next discussion item?
Next discussion item, item six, discussion and consideration of accepting an update regarding ongoing OG&E street lighting maintenance issues.
Mayor and council, this is a, due to some transition between myself and Mr. Streets and a few other issues, I've been a little derelict in getting this report in front of you. It has been almost a year since you saw it last. I see the, I see the look, Mr. Byrne, I'm sorry. But I'm, I'm catching up here, sir. You have my report before you. I will tell you that we've worked well with OG&E over the last year. We're still improving our communication. Our light audit person in Public Works has been given some new direction over the last couple of weeks, so that we continue to improve that communication. Storm set us back a little bit. We have some outages around town that we're trying to resolve right now. I will tell you probably the one thing that is becoming a little bit of a problem, and I think OG&E is in, in the audience and may be able to help answer the question, but because they're transitioning to LED, there are some areas in town that they can't support the type of lighting that is there now. And they'll only transition over to LED when there's a certain percentage of an arterial section of road that is out. So, you may drive around town and see four or five lights in a row that are out, and the rest of the, the mile is burning. Most of those situations either are a result of some things that we're trying to catch up on with the storm, or they're awaiting a certain percentage of the, of the section to be out, so that they can change the entire mile into LED.
If you've got those poles that are out, we're not paying a monthly fee on those out poles, are we?
We are paying by the month, by the pole, by the fixture. That is correct.
But if it's not working, why are we paying for it?
We've had this discussion, and there's just not a very-
I, I know, but we're paying for something we're not getting, and that's been a sticking point of me from the, from the beginning of this.
I thought our previous discussion on this was that that was the point of putting somebody on that to bird dog those issues about the poles that are out, because I know we had storm damage from a recent storm, but like, and there's a chain of streetlights that are out on Air Depot that have been out, I think even before the storm came. And I thought that that was something that we were auditing, and that we had a connection between us and ONG, excuse me, OG&E, to keep going over those. Is that no longer the case?
No, that, that's correct. And that's, that is exactly what's going on. Occasionally, OG&E will run into some issues where they, they'll have an outage. They'll, their contractor will go out and, and make a fix, get the low hanging fruit, for lack of a better analogy, and things come back on for a few days or weeks. And then the problem reoccurs in, in the next 30 mile an hour wind or whatever. And they have to dig a little deeper to solve a problem. And sometimes it could be an overhead repair or an underground repair, depending on the circumstances. But they'll try to low, get the low hanging fruit first, and it may go right back off in a few days.
But those are two, two separate issues that need to be addressed. But back to my original, if there's a square mile that they know that they're not gonna support, because the technology's too old, and we've got five, 10, or 15 lights out, whatever the threshold that is before you guys get there, you shouldn't be getting any of the taxpayers' money for those lights.
I'll let, I'll let OG&E answer that.
So, I want to clarify something Vaughn said. We are not waiting for a certain percentage of the lights to go out, so basically-
Could I, could you state your name and who you're with?
Yes, Nicole Rhodes, Director of Resource Coordination with OG&E.
Thank you.
So, we are not waiting for a certain percentage of those lights to go out. What we're doing is any lights that are on a 480 volt circuit, there is not an LED option for that, so we're having to convert that whole circuit, which means a transformer conversion, all the lights. It goes through engineering, it's an engineer job. So, what happens is when we have one light out on a circuit, it comes in to go through that engineering process, materials reserved, and then we come out and change it. I have no issue, you guys are keeping a list of where we have lights out. I have no issue getting with our billing to rebate for those lights that are out until we get that circuit converted. We cannot support those anymore, because there is not material available. But we are not waiting, so we're not gonna wait till 50% of your lights are out to convert. What happens, though, is if we get circuits in that have, say we have circuits burying how many lights are on them, so we may have a circuit with 100 lights and two lights are out. And then we have a circuit with 20 lights where 15 of them are out. We're gonna reprioritize to put those 15 lights, that 20 light circuit, to get that worked first.
So, who does the staff get with to get reimbursed on the money that we've been spending on lights?
Vaughn, we get that spreadsheet every month. I just got an updated spreadsheet. I'll get with billing tomorrow, figure out how we get credits for those. They're all indicated which ones are circuit conversions. The challenge is gonna be not knowing exactly how many lights are out on that circuit. So, when they're going around and doing those patrols, if you guys could indicate on there the number of lights that are out, that would help us to get those rebates.
Okay, thank you.
Is that there? Any other?
Yeah, before-
Thanks for bailing, bailing me out, Nicole.
Vaughn, 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 before, before she takes off, since you've brought it up, the storm damages. I'd like to give them an opportunity to-
Sure. Let me say one thing, but in, we have worked with OG&E in the past, councilman, to get some rebates on some situations. They have always been amenable to that. It, it would be 100% staff's fault to, to have not pushed on that a little harder. So, we'll work with them to make sure-
I'm not suggesting that we pay somebody's salary to go out and save 10 bucks, but if some, you know, cops out driving and they see one, we know it. Those are the things that don't take very much. And, you know, it is taxpayer money, and we, I don't even think by law and legally pay for something, we're not getting it.
And they have done that for us in the past, when there were extenuating situations.
I think we have had this discussion before, and you said that you would, you know, indicate when we have power outage.
You're right, yes, ma'am. That is correct. Nicole, I'll let you have that hot potato there.
So, the recent storm in Midwest City got hit pretty hard, which is, I think, what brought some of these issues to light. So, I also have our vegetation management department, so the tree trimming. During storm situations, OG&E trims trees to get power restored. We do not remove brush. It's part of our commitments with the Corporation Commission. Most all of the cities, I want to say most, because there could be a few that I'm unaware of, have storm debris pickup programs. City of Midwest City is one of the only cities that I'm aware of that does not have a storm debris pickup program. There may be others, I just don't get the complaints from them, so I'm not aware of them. But with the last situation, I think because of the storm debris, it really came to light here in Midwest City.
And one of the issues that I learned from this discussion with the storms was that, like she said, they go in, they take the tree limbs down that are causing the power not to go out. But if it's in the backyard, they don't move it, correct? Necessarily to the front.
So, typically, we ask them to bring it to the front. Let me explain, this last storm, it was one of the worst storms we've had because of how widespread it was amongst the city. We brought in over 250 tree crews, which equates to about 1,000 tree crew resources. We did the best we could to communicate, here's our expectations. But when you have that many resources out in the field, I'm not gonna tell you that some of them got missed and they didn't get drugged to the front. I know we had one specific issue here in City of Midwest City, where my opinion is they trimmed more than they should have to get the power restored, and we sent crews out, once we were made aware of that, to get that storm debris removed and make that situation right.
And I'm, I'm not gonna go into all the details, but there was an issue during the storms that I reached out to OG&E, and they bent over backwards.
Well, I, I want to caveat that as well. Kimberly Adams, she's our- Kimberly Adams, she's our contact person as well. Stand up, Kimberly. Kimberly's been extremely receptive to our complaints as OG&E as a whole and the company over the storm deal, and we appreciate your receptiveness and responsiveness. We did have some issues and we did, and you were responsive to those issues, so thank you very much.
Likewise. Thank you for your patience and for working, allowing us to work with you and to make the situation better.
So I would just ask the question if we could get a follow-up update on this on, in terms of the number of lights that we have out and what our adjustment rate is for those?
I will do a much better job. I apologize once again for not, for being a little derelict in getting this report before you. Would you like it in 30 days? Would you like to continue with what was directed as quarterly or do you care?
I'm just curious.
Okay.
Quarterly.
Okay. I will get back on that quarterly regimen. Yes, sir.
I just don't want it to fall off for a long...
Yes.
So can I make a point of clarification so it doesn't cause confusion once we get that? We will rebate for that light itself, but that pole we are not able to rebate for. We'd have to come out and remove the pole to be able to rebate for that. So we will rebate for those lights. I've got the list from Vaughn, most updated. I'll get with the billing folks, figure out what that totals up to, and then let you guys know.
Thank you.
I would like to say one thing real quick, and I would like to thank OG&E. I think they do, you know, fabulous service compared to a lot of cities I've seen. And part of the, Vaughn, and you can correct me, but over the years, the city hasn't always been on the short side. I think there's been a lot of give and take over the years where maybe at one time, the city was in a benefit where OG&E wasn't billing the city on all of its poles. So I think that's where you're seeing some patience from both sides, but I'm glad to hear that you're willing to correct it anyway.
Councilman Moore is correct. If you go back, Nicole, it's probably going on six or seven years now, when OG&E did a citywide audit of their own with their GIS folks and updated their database, our bill jumped significantly because their billing had not been correct for a number of years. So, yes, you are correct. We benefited for some time on some lights that were not being billed correctly. So that is a true statement. And I want to echo again, I know Mr. Lyon was in, was in constant contact with Kimberly after the storm, and they worked very closely with Public Works and with the city manager and kept us very well informed about the status of every facility that we had as a city. We had a number of lift stations that were down. That can be a very serious situation if those are down very long.
We had the hospital, the hospital did not have power and it was a, made it a priority.
So they worked really, really hard to make sure our facilities came on early and came on quickly. As a point of clarification, just so that we understand, we have exchanged emails and before the next storm, we will make sure that there is a plan in place to take care of that vegetation debris. Even from the city's perspective, when it comes to tree trimming, we always consider those trees and the debris that comes off of them as the property owner's problem. And so they have to get them out of their way so that they can get the power back on or make a repair, but ultimately it is the resident's tree, and it's his tree that they trim. So we treat it the same way as a city in Public Works as well. If it's a tree that falls over in the middle of the road in a storm, we pick it up and set it back in their front yard, for example. We don't cut it up and haul it away for them, so.
Even if it's sitting in the utility easement?
That's correct, yes ma'am. It's their tree. We don't own the tree.
Well, and a lot of times, there's a tree that's in another yard that's coming over into their yard and they're cutting it and they're bringing it to the front. And that's a lot of things that what happened this time in my ward.
Yes.
And I have a lot of elderly in my ward. So, and that was a lot, it was there for days, so.
Yeah, it...
The people that are, that were there, that wasn't their trees, but it was over in their yard that they cut.
Yeah, and that's, that's a situation we battle as a city as well. Two property owners arguing over whose responsibility is to trim a particular tree. And a lot of times, we don't, you know, a lot of times, we don't have an argument. It's between the two property owners as to whose, but if it hangs over your yard, you have the right to trim it and keep it from hanging over your property, even though the roots don't lie on your property, so.
I guess as part and parcel of the conversation of how we're going to deal with the vegetation issue before the next storm would be my question also about just that issue about the trees in the utility easement. I mean, the utility company has the right to access that because it's in their utility easement. So I understand what Mr. Sullivan's saying about it's being viewed by us as being the property owner's problem. I'm not quite sure whether our...
Well, we're definitely going to have to come up with a plan for the next storm, so...
It's a matter of communication, councilperson. We just need to communicate better with OG&E and make sure everybody's...
But we are getting off into some other discussions other than accepting the update. So with that being said, I cheer to entertain a motion to accept the report as given.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any people saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Distension, motion carries. OG&E, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Point of personal privilege, can we take a five-minute recess?
Yes, ma'am, we can. We are recessed for five minutes. Okay, recess is over. Now call this meeting back to order, and we will move to discussion item number seven.
Discussion item seven. Discussion and consideration regarding a public presentation on development and design phase of the Midwest City Animal Shelter by Selcher Schaefer Architects from Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Mayor, I think I would appreciate you allowing me to be here tonight to do that day-long project. I want to go ahead and start right now. The last presentation we gave was based off of schematic design being completed, and at this point, we've now completed design development.
We've been working with Midwest City staff, animal shelter staff, animal shelter committee, and ADG as a third-party review, another architect group that can check our work and make sure we've put everything in for a quality project. The site plan that you see in front of you, we've been doing, we've completed demolition and geotechnical boring at this point in time, and we should expect the next, in the next week or so, that geotechnical report so our structural engineer can finalize their structures and foundations. We've looked at site limitation from the residential just north of the property, so we'll have a wood fence there that keeps our commercial property a little more private and will not encroach onto their viewing space. The site lighting is per ordinance, but we are also looking at how we can connect the park area into this facility's landscaping, so we can draw the public into it and they can be more engaged with the building. On another note for site development, we've looked at future LID opportunities, so low impact design, which would allow us to retain storm water and develop the site so it is more efficient. And on the next slide, we will move to the floor plan. It has not changed that much from the schematic design. We've been doing more refinements. So we have, in the last week, had a page turn with the Midwest City staff as we went through every room, discussed electric outlets, controls, thermostats, finishes, even to reclaimed wood for countertops, for the break room, ceiling, and the get acquainted room space benches. So we're actually utilizing some of the wood that was part of the demolition of the site, so we're reusing those trees. We're pretty excited about that. We met with the entire, I guess, the animal shelter staff, but also with the veterinary, Dr. Agar, Agri, I apologize, and we discussed his facility, and he's going to get back with us with confirmation that we've got everything in there correct, and if he wants to do any modifications after this design development. Otherwise, we have changed a few items in the service areas and just updated more detailing. Can you go on to the next slide? These images will be similar to the one you saw in schematic design, but we are developing this entry even further, so it'll be a little bit more inviting for the public, so we can actually get them to the building and get them in the doors and hopefully see the increased adoption rates and how it engages with the neighborhood. We're also even taking it to the next level where we've just, are, been discussing holiday decorations, so providing power up at the roof edge and lines, so you can put lights up and community interaction with maybe movies in the park. The next rendering would be the front entry, as you can start to see, it's developed with some lion scapeing, and we get that front portico area where it'll be uplit from that red box up. Next slide. And again, another view, and we've recently started talking about signage on the building and how we'll relate to more signage at the corner of Reno Avenue and Woodside Drive. So we'll put minimal signage on the building, but it will be for Midwest City Animal Shelter and the address. Next slide. And here's the lobby. We've discussed in the past some sculptural elements to make it a little more inviting, natural light, and direct views from the staff so they can have a clear understanding of what's happening in their space. Next slide. In the corridor here, we've started looking at wayfinding, and I'll describe a little bit more as we go further into these slides. I think Brandon, in the last schematic design package, introduced those dog bones, and that's more so if you're having the public come in and you can direct them to a specific room, and say the blue room, the green room, the yellow room, and so they can come and identify specific animals that they're interested in, along with the cats. And then there's more viewing. Those are the get acquainted spaces with the reclaimed wood benches, and those lead out to a get acquainted yard. And this is more, another view looking back towards the community room or flexible space and that red box at the entry. We've also gone through and reviewed all of the materials for this building exterior-wise, and we've met the ornish requirements of 80% of masonry products, and the rest of the building will have a 20% of metal panel and glass. And this is the community space, and we're trying to utilize that additional lumber from the demolition of the trees, and we are working on our options, depending on how much is actually reclaimed. depending on how much is actually reclaimed. And this is the cattery, and we're defining an accent wall with green, and you can see that this is a fairly flexible space with cat condos and the ability to have free roam cats in this space. So we have a little bit of isolation, but free roam, and you can use it multiple ways with these movable cat condos. This is one of the dog kennel areas, and we have tried to give a lot of wayfinding. So you'll see in this one, this is a blue, and I apologize right now. The paint on the wall should match the kennel color. And so we like to say that, I can't read it from here. I forgot what it said. I apologize. Yeah, you can't change a dog's past, but you can rewrite the future. So we've been trying to liven up the spaces and put some fun quotes. And the next one. Yeah, you can't buy love, but you can rescue it. And then the third one is one of my favorites. Rescued is my favorite breed. So this gives you kind of an idea that this is an economic way to give some wayfinding and make these spaces a little more exciting as the public gets access to. And I think that may be the last slide, but I'll give you an idea on the schedule. Right now, we are anticipating being done with construction documents on December 16th. We'll go to bid in January 2020, and we approximate the construction to be about one year, so ending February 2021. And we're always going to keep an eye on the budget development as we go forward. Any wish list items, we're putting priority to so we can give you as much as possible with the budget we have. I appreciate you guys giving me a chance to give you an update.
Any questions or comments? Again, thank you for taking the time to come down and present this to us. We're, I know I can see three smiles back there in the back that. There's been a lot of input from the public, and we appreciate everybody's input on this, and thank you for taking the time to come down and present this to us.
We appreciate all the input. It just makes the building better.
Is there any further discussion questions? Chair to entertain a motion to accept the report.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Indicate if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thanks again, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Now we move into the next discussion item.
Discussion item eight, discussion consideration of a quarterly update on the progress of the execution of the general obligation bond or the bond projects. Vaughn? And this is just a report, so if there's any questions, we have multiple staff here that can answer any questions.
Mayor and council will be glad to entertain any questions if you have any about any of the projects that are listed there. The ones that I can, and some other staff, maybe in the audience, that can help as well.
I'd like to just say thank you for preparing this update for us on the geo-bond projects. I'd ask about this, and I really appreciate it, and I'm really excited with the progress that we're making on these. So thank you to you and staff.
I like the transparency where our citizens can see how their dollars are being spent. Not that it's ever been spent wrong in the past, but we used to have this transparency. It's forthcoming, and it's easy to see, and this is nice. Thank you.
I don't know that you need a motion to approve on this, but I'm happy to give one.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do a motion to accept the report.
Yeah.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Indicate if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Thank you, and it's exciting times. Next discussion item.
Discussion item nine, discussion consideration of appointing Ms. Julie Maloney to fill the vacant ward four position on the Citizens Advisory Committee on Housing and Community Development.
Is Terry here?
She's off her new grand.
Oh, that's right. She has a new grand.
Terry sent me an email about a month or so ago when this first came up. She, this lady had expressed interest, and she does with my ward. And so I called Julie, had a nice conversation with her. She's very willing to serve, you know, maybe serve on other boards if this one is something that she likes. But it's nice to have people that are stepping up and wanting to take part in our community. And so I enthusiastically recommend her, and I'm going to make a motion to appoint her.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Indicate if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we move into the new business public discussion of our agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before council? Hearing none. We do have an executive session attached to this agenda. Mr. Lyon?
Executive session number one, discussion consideration of entering into an executive session as allowed under Title 25 State Statute 307B1 to discuss the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or resignation of any salaried public officer or employee. We will, if you'd like, we could recess.
Well, I would like the council's indulgence into going ahead and closing out this agenda, recessing it, and then going through our rest of agenda. We do have another. Okay. A motion and a second to recess.
Do we need to call that? It's just.
After we come back into the.
It's up to you. Do we need to announce further information? I don't think we normally read them. We just announce.
We do have a further information item in minutes of the September 29th, or September 3rd, 2019 Plan Commission. That's just for further information. So I do have a motion and a second to recess. All in favor? Indicate if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. A call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We do have consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so trustees by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of trustees or members of the audience who wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. With that being said, entertain a motion. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Indicate if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We'll move into the new business public discussion of this agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we hereby adjourn. I call to order the Midwest City Municipal Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda, and once again, these items are placed on consent agenda so trustees can, by unanimous consent, approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or member of the audience who wished to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. Chair to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Indicate if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We do have one discussion item. Mr. Lyon?
Yes. See one discussion consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. We do not need any action at this time.
No action needed on the discussion item. We move into the new business public discussion of this agenda. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we hereby adjourn. And call to order the Midwest City Economic Development Authority. We do have a consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Indicate if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. New business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we do have an executive session attached to this agenda. Mr. Lyon?
We do not need the executive session tonight.
No executive session needed. We return, and I'll call back to order the Midwest City Municipal, or Council Authority. Council agenda, I'm sorry. I call us back to order on the council agenda, and the chair to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move.
You got a motion and a second. All in favor? Indicate if you're saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be moving upstairs for executive session. Thanks for being here.